There is a way to make the unit cost cheaper. And I have to say, guys like you created. Okay, they're always trying to drive the price down of the services that we provide. And one way that we can take cost out of the system is actually take our geophones and to bury them, cement them in over a grid, cement them in maybe 100 meters. And leave them. And then every time you monitor another well within the boundaries of where the chokes are laid up, you simply run out, connect a recording device to them, and then take it away. We call that burying array. I've put about 60 of these buried arrays in around the world. The oldest one I put in was put in in 2008, and it's still active. Every six months to a year, the company will go back and monitor another well. And the largest of these we put in was 240 square kilometers, and we monitored 200-plus wells over 30 months. And the average cost for monitoring all of it, capital cost, necro, services, manpower, analysis, was less than $2,000 a frac station. So that drives cost out of the system. But it requires that you think about monitoring a large fraction of your wells. And I hope by the end of this talk, you can believe that you should be monitoring a large fraction of your wells, because if you don't monitor, you haven't got a clue what went on in the subsurface. You really don't. All right. So when we go and collect that data and we process it, our first product is what I call the dots in the box. One of these is the hypo-sensors of the events. It's where that snap, crack, and pot happened in time and in space. And we put a dot there, and sometimes we made movies of these dots growing around the well. But kind of as a go-kits, if you can see, when they frac those two horizontal wells down here in this particular example, which is from Northern Canada, the microseism data stayed within a couple of hundred meters of the well. It came nowhere near the surface. So all this talk, some people have an agenda about fracking up into the potable water table is crap. It's just that. But I want to tell you that simply looking at the dots in the box. Now, the dots in the box have been what we built the business on for most. And they do tell us some things that are useful about your internal fracture. They tell us about mechanical failure sometimes, whether you have a bad cement job, or if you're doing some completion where you are dropping balls down to cause some sleeves and tunnels to open, so that you get frac at different stages in the well. Sometimes those walls break. Sometimes you're pumping. You take each stage time and time again. What you really want to do is you start at the toe, and you complete the stage processes through the toe, then you move up to the next one, and then you move up, and you gradually complete the well from toe to heel. But if you're not likely to estimate what we find in about 15 intersegment basis, there's actually problems where you are treating stage two for the second time. The ball didn't see it, the cement's not good, and you think you're moving to stage three, but you're not there at all. We can see that immediately because of the microseism events going on at stage two. At stage two, instead of moving to stage three, eight, and stage four. We can see if you have mechanical failure, your plugs fail, and mechanical failures like the casing breaks, your casing failure, you'll get a big bang, and then you'll see all the fluid and all the microseism events coming out where the casing failed. Geological failures, how can it be a geological failure? If you frac into a fault, and there's lots of faults in all of these shale beds, you frac into that fault, it can become a deep zone for your hydraulic fluid. You can have faulting driving, you can have the fracture fluid going several kilometers away from your fault. And if you're really not likely to open that regional fault into an aquifer, and you'll water up your well, then that can be a career-limiting event for the completion engineer who's causing that to happen. And then dots in the box are kind of useful for seeing the trajectory. Look at those dots. We use a bi-winged symmetric tensile penny-shaped frac there. Every stage treated differently, and that's what we see. Every stage turns different. But people will put shrink wrap around that collection of dots and say, "Well, that's my stimulated reservoir volume." It's not really, but that's what we did. Already you can get some sense of the gross efficiency. It appears in the middle of the well there, and I left people already, but you can see that. But you know, there's not as much going. It doesn't look like we completed particularly these two stages kind of in the middle, left-hand well. There's not much activity there, so it would appear that we didn't complete those as well as some of the other stages. Maybe, maybe not. But all of that is what dots in the box would give you, and if we can do it in real time, if I can tell you you have a mechanical failure in real time, that's better than if you find out several years later when the well isn't producing. But it should. So real time is something that we have in some areas in the industry, and we have microseism people that take all of the data that you gather, all this processing to locate them. It's basically depth migration, several thousand channels worth of data. We can't bring that amount of data back to our data processing center. So we have to take the data processing center out into the field. But with the Internet, as you're proving tonight, anywhere is everywhere. So we actually take our processing center out of the field, but I can't get my geologist to do that. So we put a satellite dish on the top of the processing center, and I have five of these. And the geologist sits back in the office in Houston or Denver, or in his bedroom with his jammies, and does the processing instructions out to the field, and then the results are transmitted back to the department where they are. In fact, we took one of these processing centers, and we put it in a small C container, and we shipped it to China because we had time. We wanted to do real time. I had cabinet down in the field in China, that C container, I call it my China cabinet, and we put that, and has the dish on the top, where we can do real time in China. I have another one of those in Australia. Okay, so we can do it, but there is so much more that we want, that we want to know the reservoir, than the dots in the box can tell us as they are. We want to know the deals, to know where there's more volume in the pot, to know where we crack the rock today. But how is that going to drain over time? After all, the reservoir is a dynamic unit. We want to know what part of it is propped and what part is unpropped, because after they pump the water down, if they don't put little stints in to hold those fractures open, then as soon as you start pumping, stop pumping, the tectonic forces in theory have caused those fractures to close back out. In the old days, when they first started fracking, they'd throw ground glass, or pump shot, or walnut shells down a well. Nowadays, we use sand, and sometimes little ceramic pellets, but they put them down. Now, we don't prop all of the fractures we create, so you want to know where that proppant goes. You can get that from the dots in the box. We want to know what the well will produce. We don't want to have to wait six months to a year to find out whether we've been successful with that well. You want to know today whether that's going to be a successful project, and you should do that more wells nearby. We want to know where drainage volume is. Number one question in shale plays, in unconventional places, what should my well spacing be? Where, how far away can I put a well that I'm not going to leave any hydrocarbons behind, but I'm not going to interfere with his nearest neighbor? You don't get that from dots in the box. And then finally, stress field. What is the stress domain in the reservoir, because that's going to affect whether your pipe collapses, and how the reservoir will react as you drain it over time to squeeze the hydrocarbons out. All of these, all of these questions can be addressed by microseism measurements, but not from just the height of the structure. So how do we get there? Well, the fact of the matter is that when this rock breaks, as I said, and there is a stand of crack and pot, moves out from the point of failure of the rock with a particular power in phase. The full moment tensor that describes the magnitude of the event, and how it moves, the strike, the dip, and the rake, that is the direction of movement. All of that can be derived if you capture the signal sufficiently. So for example, in this case where it was a normal fault, and I have displayed here two arms for my frac star, look in the upper right, those red lines, and you can see that as I cross the failure plane, the nodal plane of that failure, as illustrated by the yellow in between the red and the blue here, the yellow plane. As I cross that nodal plane, there's a polarity flip. And so if I could map that polarity flip and the distribution of amplitudes, I can actually come up with the full mechanism. And so given a large array on the surface, and I said I do my downhole, and that's because downhole doesn't allow you to do this very conveniently. If I had a large array on the surface, I captured the whole spread of amplitude and phase that's emitted by the event. Here's a real example, a strike, slip, fall, and that is a fault that is moving, I don't know whether it's lateral or right lateral, but it's basically a vertical fault that is slipping in a strike-slip fashion. And there's my frac star, and the reds and blues show you the distribution of polarity, and the size and the circles show you the distribution of amplitudes that we receive. And that distribution of amplitudes and polarities can be inverted uniquely to describe the focal mechanism, the failure mechanism of the event. There's a dip slope, positive on one side, negative on the other. These are real examples. So when I, if I have that focal dots, and I can replace every one of the dots with a planar element, now that's my model. It's Akam's razor, it's the simplest model that will describe the energy release, a planar element with a strike, sorry, with a size, an area that's proportional to the magnitude, and with a strike and a dip and a rake, as evidenced by the full moment tensor that I determined by capture and that distribution of polarities and amplitudes. So I can replace all the dots with that discrete fracture network. I take that discrete fracture network, and I can upscale it to a finite element model of permeability, that I can now run into a reservoir simulator. But wait, the nice thing, profit was important, because now I've taken every one of those dots and put a discrete fracture network element on it as if it was going to produce forever. Not all of these are going to get proppant. So the proppant, in fact, these little balls of sand or ceramic that are going to go out and act as instruments, the fractures open when we start producing on the well. So what we found is we know the volume of proppant that was pumped in each stage. We know that from the pump, the frac pumper. So we can take that volume and using the packing factor that's provided by the manufacturer, we stuff it out into our discrete fracture network, working out from the wellboard until we run out of proppant. And we say, "There, now I've got an estimate of the propped fraction of the stimulated volume." And you can see if I compare them, the propped on the right is smaller than the actual. And typically, typically, the highest or the volume of the productive or propped SRV will be somewhere between 15 and 40% of the raw SRV. And it's really the propped SRV that's going to produce over the longest amount of time. Now I can do the same thing. I take this upscale, go through a 100-foot or a 30-meter finite element model, and I put it into Eclipse, CMG, or one of these reservoir simulation programs to estimate the production curve and the drainage volume. So now I've got a much better image. Instead of just this collection of dots, I've got an image of the enhanced permeability, that part of it that's propped and that part that's not, and now that is time-dependent of where I'm going to drain that well, which then speaks to what my well spacing should be. The old model, bi-winged symmetric penny-shaped tensile frac was based on a simple mathematical model that they could solve the physics for. What I'm doing here is going out into the field as if the field were my laboratory it is, and I'm taking measurements in the field that integrate everything that's real. It takes into account the rock properties, takes into account the regional stresses at the point we're treating as they are. It takes into account how those stresses change as you pump the rock, as you pump the job. It takes into account what you pumped, whether you pumped the program you intended to, or something happened and you only got half of it done. Takes into account the proppant amount and the fluid amount that you actually pumped. So it is a real world, in real time, in situ observation of what you are doing to the reservoir, and you can take it in real time all the way to a production and a drainage system. That's where we've come with the microseism. When we first got out of the field, I didn't start to do the dots in the box in 2005, all the way now to produce simulations in real time of what the reservoir is going to do, and as well invert for the stress regime in the well. I'll show you a little bit more about that in just a second. Okay. How do we know all of these models and everything that we are doing works? Well, we've tested these estimates of production against real-world production and found that it was effective. And I want to give you some real field examples just to give you a sense of how we're using these microseism data. So I've got just a couple of examples. This is from the Eagle Ford, it's down in Atascosta, Atascosta, I have the hardest time with that. Atascosta County, down in South Texas. Okay? There with the frac star that we put out, these four horizontal wells that we were monitoring for Murphy. Frac star covers about 21 square miles. Let's see, up that by, let's see, one of them points 3.6, a moment by about 3, get the square kilometers. This is the dots in the box presentation of all the microseismic events we were able to see. This is the Eagle Ford play, I think I mentioned. And you see basically what we're seeing are two trends. You can see a slightly north of east trend, these balls, as they, each one of these stages as you move from toe in the upper left corner down to heel in the lower right corner, each one of the stages that was pumped is given a different color. And you can see on the left-hand side, which is the map view, the sort of distribution of these spots are men, and you don't see anything bi-winged symmetric penny-shaped. Every stage is different. You see the slightly north of east trend running across the four wells, as well as some big black lineations, we painted the black on there, that are faults. Now, if you move over to the right-hand side, you're looking at a section view, side-on for the wells, and where that fault is in the middle, that fault number two, you can see clearly, it dove down below the target reservoir into the horizon below, which in this case is the Buddha and others below. Buddha sometimes is full of tar gas. Sometimes you don't want to be fracking down into the Buddha. But they sure examined, and they didn't, they didn't watch this in real time. If they had, they, in real time, we delivered the results, and they said, "Oh, shucks, that explains what's going on." Now, it's interesting that when we do this focal mechanism analysis that I talked to you about, we actually found that there were two distinct focal mechanisms. The slightly northeast ones, the ones I've colored in red, are all dip slope, small. By the way, I have to mention in my, the size of these fracture planes that are minus two is above a square meter, square meter. So the red ones, they're the meat and potatoes. They're the work of fracking the well that is going to produce the hydrocarbons you want. The blue ones into the regional faults are strike slope. And they show up very clearly. In fact, we have a little sort of metric that if the ratio of strike slope to dip slope crosses a certain boundary that we warn the operator that there's probably some faulty penny-shaped. And it happens in all of the place, all of the place in shape that we've ever been in. Sometimes more, worse. Here you can see two poses of the seismic, I put it in for you guys. You can see that the blue mechanisms against that seismic profile, you can see that dip slope, that fault coming down, heading towards the north of Mexico. And it runs along. Okay, and there in map view, once again, 3D map, or a slice, time slice, which you can see the fault picked up, and how those faults, those blue bands, those strike segments I mentioned buried array, takes cost of system, another Eagle Ford example, just to show you what you can do if you put in a buried array. So here we put in this buried array, covered by 20 square miles, whatever, 60 square kilometers. And you see that we monitored 71 wells, 1,100 stages underneath this buried array for this operator over an area of two years. And the results, on the same way, it was a burst of talk, just kidding. The blue are the meat and potato dips, the dip slope faults, the red are the regional faults. The regional faults are actually in the lower quarter Eagle Ford. The seismic data you're looking at, which is a curvature map, is in the upper Eagle Ford, and in fact, the regional faults are more in the lower Eagle Ford than they are in the upper. And that's why you don't see that same paramount. But the blue bands were controlled by some of the faulting that you see in the upper Eagle Ford. And you see where the white bands kind of in its center is where two fault trends were coming together, and that caused complex shearing in that area. Now, only by monitoring a large number of your wells do you start to get this understanding on regional bases or on field basis of what's really going on in your reservoir. You can see what parts of the reservoir you were then are able to frac, for whatever reason. I can't tell you that without going back and looking geology of those particular wells, or whether those wells were pumped differently. But this, I forget, you can understand how that gave us the reduce. Okay, well, most basic analysis of all on dots in the box, just a couple of quick examples. Here was a case out in the Midland Basin of West Texas where an operator wanted to know as they did tank development, as they did multi-bench development, how the vertical separation between wells should be, so they put three wells, three horizontals, on above the other, one in the middle spray bay, the lower spray bay, and the Wolf campaign. You can see we used a frac star, once again, to monitor them. You can see kind of the, this SRV, the enhanced permeability for each of the three wells, sliced through the middle of the well, that's kind of the results. Here's your DFN, the upper DFN, middle spray bay, lower spray bay, Wolf campaign well. On the top, we've got the, am I not speaking loud enough? On the top, you've got the DFN, the unpropped DFN on the bottom. You can see how the DFN decreased. We then upscale it for permeability enhancement model, with the raw and the propped on the bottom, and sliced through it to show you where the permeability zones are, where I've done the best job of fracking the well. I put that in the reservoir simulator. Here's my prediction based on the microseismic data of the production from that well, calibrated to the 90-day old prediction. We can see that I'm within 90%. Seismic data to drive the model, not some arbitrary bi-winged symmetric model. But most importantly, and I have found the engineers really don't care what my estimate of the production is, because they figure it's going to happen anyway. But what they do care about is where production is coming from, the drainage area. So here's a slice through those three wells. If you're looking at it sideways, in a section view, and it's the pressure depletion predicted from my production model. And here, you're three months out, six months out, 12 months out, 18 months out, 24 months out. You can see how over time, they started to talk to each other, and that's why just looking at where the balls are is, it doesn't make any sense. This is a time-dependent decision. And even after 30, well, even after 30 months, there was still a space between that shallow well and a lower one. So working with the operator, we determined that the well spacing on the two Ebus wells was not appropriate, but that there was a bench in the middle between the upper well and middle spray bay and the lower spray bay that we could probably do an infill. And the operator, and this is from his webpage, where he said those white wells in the middle and the Joe Mill level, those were not going to be intact until we looked at the microseismic data and measured what the drainage volume was going to be. And they then placed those in, and just, it happened that within a few months, someone next door drilled a well in the Joe Mill and made a good well from it. Other units of that kind, drainage area, a new company called Edelman Controlling, again working in the Midland, the Burden, makes them this time on the central base platform. And they had a target in the San Andres, which is relatively shallow. You can see now, you're familiar with what a frac star will look like that we go over with. We found now, by taking the one well that they drilled and doing our full cycle treatment to understand what drainage, what the drainage volume would be, we found that their model, that they were developing the field upon their model of four wells per square mile per section, could actually be increased to six without there being interference between the wells. And moving from four to six, we actually increased the production by 43%. And taking into account the cost of the wells, the maintenance, and operating costs, we actually increased the NPD of the field by 20%. But we also tested eight wells, and eight wells caused an increase in production, yes, but not at a sufficient rate to overcome the extra charges, so it actually went negative. So we should go back to the operator, and he used that, and he self-propped. So it was worth 43% more, 20% more to him. And here you can see that same illustration, we're looking at a map, it was the four-well model, drainage, production, sorry, pressure depletion on the right after a year, six-well model, and you can see that there was lots of room in the four-well model to put more wells in there. This is all being derived from microseismic data, folks. This is all being done in real time, and all of this analysis can be done within a few days completing the well. Now, I mentioned about stress regime, and I just want to quickly say that when we see these focal mechanisms, whether they're reversed or normal or strike, between the stresses at the point of failure and the mechanism that are well-understood, the model that is used is Moore-Coolen failure. Moore-Coolen failure says that when the shear stress overcomes the force of friction, then the buck stops. Like with your tire of a water bearing. Too high, your tire uses connection with the road, and you go into hydroline. So that's what, and that's exactly what we do. I do frac down on the lower right, you can see that we start with an initial condition, and by pumping into the rocks, by pumping into the rocks, we are in fact causing the normal confining pressure to decrease. Eventually, we hit that line of friction, the frictional sliding envelope, where the shear stress has bonded on the vertical axis, over comes the, the normal stress on the horizontal axis, and the rock fails, the false shears. Now, where the direction that it moves depends on the projection of the existing stresses on failure line. The direction it moves, rake, depends on the projection. Zone forces on failure line. So when we determine the strike and the dip and the rake on the fracture plane, we can then invert to look at, to look for the relative values of the vertical and the horizontal stresses at the reservoir point and get, sorry, at the failure point. And understand why casings fail, what the hoop stresses are, and all the rest. It's really, it's kind of the frontier of microseismic interpretation. So we finish with just one small component. As we move in shifts to the number of wells and multi-platforms, the engineers all tell us that they can't afford to customize the well spacing in every field. They may do a microseismic job. They may do a micro seismic job on one project, one well, and decide what a typical spacing is. And then they put on their blinders and they pump and pray and complete well after well after well in the field until something goes wrong. And as a result of that, completion line, completion wells line, we get frac hits, we get observations that 20% of the frac stages are contributing 80% of the production. That sort of thing. Because they're not watching, and they're just, the geology is heterogeneous. I have never seen two frac stages. How can you assume every stage is going to treat the same? But it's not economic to change well spacing on the fly. So, I've changed my model. It's on the stethoscope for micro seismic, to something else. I said, "Yes, engineer, go ahead, go ahead. Design your wells best way you can. And pump, but don't crack. Watch every stage. Put in that every range that you can monitor every stage." And if you design based on 250 feet of coverage for each well, pump until you get 250 feet. If you get it in an hour, stop, and stop paying subsidies. If you, if you get it in two hours, fine. If you don't get it in two hours, keep pumping until you do get it. And you can do that in a buried rate, a permanent monitoring system. So, I changed my model. No longer hour is micro seismic, it's stethoscope. What we're going to do now is take micro seismic as a meter monitor, that you stick in the reservoir and you cook every stage. And you just, and in fact, today you see more, what did I say, modern. We're going to have not just a dumb meter monitor, we're going to have a smart meter monitor that's going to have AI intelligence in style, giving instructions to the pumper on how to pump every stage. All of our experience in the area, and everything was happening well to that point. So, that's micro seismic monitoring, and now all experts.
Okay, thank you so much for the, okay, that was very interesting presentation. So, now I let, I open up the, the time for the Q and A. So, I'd like Sumara to, if you have a question, either for Mr. Yustri or Mr. Gunther, I'll let you start.
Hello, Yustri.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hello, Mbaita. So I think, yeah, some question from here that's... Uh, I would like to ask to the floor from here, that's some questions, which is... Does anybody have question? Mbaita or Peter? And from my side, that's, I see the presentation from Mbaita. It's very comprehensive information from us, for us. And then, some interesting part like on the commercial issue, which is the dollar per barrel in 2016, is now, it was, is $40. So, there is any information on the 2018 pricing? How's the dollar per barrel?
Yes, if I understand the questions correctly, now the price, the whole price is about $70 per barrels and $25 or $50 barrels. Uh, the question was about return or... And I think what you answer is simply, a simple answer that the regular return right now is improving a lot, not only because of the oil price, but because of the efficiency that we're able to incorporate in drilling and in the extraction of the hydrocarbons. So, Peter touched base a little bit about the AI. We are starting using that a lot right now. You learn to identify zone, find the best benches, the best layer to, to be completed. That was to bring the most effective, the most recovering idea for, in terms of the efficiency that we can make. Um, the AI, for example, if you call that the onshore shell play, you're dealing with... If we add technologies to analyze a well, it will take them a year to analyze 1,000 tons of wells. So, we're using AI in this case, trying to find the best information to test, the best information to extract the hydrocarbons, which give us a better recovery per well, a better production per well, I would say. And that would definitely boost the ROI much higher. Plus, these days we have a better, a better mineral price. There's also a...
So, Mbaita, is possible that maybe in 2020, that's the break even price? Hello? Hello? Hello, Yustri? Is NASA from Semarang here? Hello, Mbaita, yes, connect again. Can you hear us?
In the here.
Yes, very well.
They can hear us? Can they text you?
Yes, very well. So, my question? Let's say on 2020, so the break even price in US sales, it will be, can be, go to $20? On the average?
Who's, who's Mbaita?
Yes, Mbaita? Hello?
Yes, can you hear me, please? Hello?
Yes, it's regarding, uh, break even price in US sales place. It's gonna be going down to $20 on the, on the dollar per barrel?
Oh, I see, I see. The break...
Yes.
And break even price is not move down much, much lower in the future. Uh, the, the role that we play in the AI and in the big, big machine deep learning is also, of course, I believe, to becoming much more dominant in the coming years. And as that happening, the, the operating for the break even price can be much, much lower. Even like, say, maybe $50, $40, like what happened in 2014, 2015. It kills a lot of the commercial play in the space, the, something, you know, the, it may, many, many places in economy. But I believe with this innovation that we have right now, that $40 would not be, we still be able to make commercial projects with $40 in the coming years.
It's could be, it will be interesting, I think, on the 2020. And also, as you may know, that Saka Energy is a Indonesian company has...
Saka Energy is an Indonesian company has a cell block in Eagle Ford. A cell block in Eagle Ford.
Acut Swift Energy. So I think some question again from Pak Gunther. From Pak Gunther, from Pertamina Upstream Technology Center. Please, Pak Gunther.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arif. Good evening, Yustri, my name is Gunther. Very interesting presentation from Mbaita and Prof Gunther. I want to ask Mbaita a little bit of technical issue about the geological method. You said that in the conventional exploration or development, the geological methods, I just heard about the 3D seismic data. So, is there any other method that we can use for evaluation in exploration states? Uh, for your information, that our 3D data usually lay on an end class and not in the central of the position. So, we lack of 3D data in the deposition center of the basins. We only have 2D. It's only a regional 2D. Even the space of the 2D may be three or five kilometers apart. So, can we use that for evaluation of this exploration state to evaluate the dimension of the basins that can be evaluated to calculate the volumetric volume of the hydrocarbons? Uh, is there any other uh, geological method like maybe gravity or magnetic dynamics to be used on calculated that issue? Thank you.
Okay, I think I understand the question, and the answer is yes. There are still so many things about geological method that we can use in order to evaluate the basin. Even if you only have sparse 2D depth, but we can do the gravity-magnetic modeling. That will define the shape of your basin, the depth of basement, and so and so forth, and also the burial thickness of the body itself. You can derive the temperature for your terminal gradient for base modeling based on that. And if you have enough wells to correlate it, and if you're lucky enough to have some samples from the world that has a source of sample of that, you can extrapolate that information using your 2D tiles, the particular source of heat within the steep line. All that can be done within 2D depth, not necessarily about using 3D. In fact, for many, many plays, many positive variations, the, uh, the high POC, the high prolific source of normally very low in terms of velocity. You can use velocity to map the lower velocity section within the map. That can be correlated to your potential source of cell. Uh, existing wells, we can have thermal control, you know, thermal gradients, we have that. And for sure, you need to do, you have to do the basin modeling in order to understand maturity within the basin. Are we going to be expecting gas versus older?
Yeah, it's not a question, but...
Yeah, it's not a question.
But, Yustri, it's from Dr. Andre, ITV.
Okay, thank you for any interesting presentation. I am Andre from Quebec, ITV. I have two question for Pak Peter. The first, the first one is, actually, for the monitoring of micro seismic event, hyposcentral determination, and also focal mechanism analyzing, I think is one of the basic tasking in seismology. So, my question is, is there any development or innovation in monitoring of micro seismic event in the near, near future? And the second question is, uh, if you use two bore, uh, borehole seismometer and surface seismometer, or just borehole seismometers? Because the, the, it's very good to constrain the focus depth of the event, and the surface seismometer is good for the lateral distribution. That's all. Thank you.
Did anybody get that? No, she's on the phone. I'm sorry that you were winking in and out, and I'm not sure I got the question at all. There were two questions. Second question.
Azali?
Yeah.
Azali?
Mbaita.
Yeah. Okay, Pak Andre will repeat the question.
Test. Okay, Peter, I have two question. First is, uh, in a micro seismic monitoring, actually, hyposcentral determination and focal mechanism analysis are one of the basic tasking in seismology. So, my question is, is there any development or innovation in method for the micro seismic monitoring in the near future? And the second one is, uh, for the monitoring, did you use both of borehole seismology monitoring and surface monitoring? Actually, uh, borehole seismometer is very good to constrain the focus depth of the event, and the surface seismometer is good for the constraint of the lateral distribution.
Good, I did hear the questions this time. So, I think the first question was, are there any developments that I see in the processing of the data coming down in the future? Yes, we are concentrating, from a geological point of view, a better invocation of anisotropy in our velocity models. Like most seismic processing, of our data starts, the quality of our locations. The focal mechanisms we determine are dependent on us having the locations of the events correct. And so, we are spending a lot of time on getting better and better velocity models that are three-dimensional and anisotropic. There is beyond that, an awful lot of work that can be done once you have the focal mechanisms and you have the locations on interpreting the data. And one of the biggest problems we have now is that there is no very effective forward model for, to predict what the micro seismic data should look like for a given fracture event. And there are a number of groups working on those forward models. And, and I think the development of those forward models will really help us tie the loop a bit better, able to interpret the data that we are collecting. Your second question was, have we ever tried to put borehole and surface data sets together or do them simultaneously? The answer is yes, we've done it a number of times without very much success. And the best we can understand that lack of success is because the, the velocity models that are used in the dowl processing versus surface processing actually sample the earth in different ways. The velocity models don't sample the earth in different ways. The seismic travel part that we see on the event travel that we see are sampling the velocity of the earth in different ways. It's hard for us to come up with a velocity model that is universal and will allow for the appropriate processing of both surface and dowl data. So when we do it, we have very large events, we are able to correlate them. But the, the majority of the events that we get from the surface, they are kind of in the right place, and they certainly with all within the circle of uncertainty of either data set, but it's still not a very satisfying result.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Is, get one more question from Pak Gunther, Pertamina.
I just want to...
I just want to know about the specification of the instrument that you use for monitoring the fracturing or the production. Because if I not wrong that, it can monitor the flowing of the fluid that you show the picture.
Sure. In order for us to provide a service at a economic rate to our clients, we use off-the-shelf equipment. So, the gear that we use, downhole are typically the oil juice base or ion phones, Avalon phones, many other temperature. Recorded at the surface with Surcell or I-O kind of equipment. The surface arrays that we put out, cracks are arrays that we put out, we are typically using Surcell 40428. We haven't graduated to the 600 series yet, vertical geofones. We have experimented with these phones, but without much success. The noise force is high. We've done a little work with DAS or with fiber optic cables. But the singular component nature of fiber optic cable is causes serious problems in locating events, great uncertainties, and the noise force in fiber optic cables gets to be higher. So, our best success has been with just conventional seismic moving coil geofones and standard off-the-shelf recording devices, seismic graphs. Most of the magic is done in the computer with the analysis and the processing.
Okay, thank you. Just confirmation about sensitivity of the instrument. This method can detect the movement of the fluid. It's not only the fracture.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we have done a little bit of work on trying to detect fluid movement in the reservoir. Just a couple of projects. We have been able to detect CO2 escaping through a cap rock. That's fairly loud and noisy event when it occurs. The actual movement at sort of reservoir speeds of fluid, the fluid front or the floodfront through a reservoir, we never actually tried to record. Given that the micro seismic events have a floor of minus 2 and they're fairly volatile, like a very skeptical with the current way that we're doing our monitoring that we would be able to see fluid movement, micro seismic. We're going to have to develop a much, much inter arrays and probably put our geophones close to the reservoir in order to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's, so it can be used also for the injection for conventional injection, like the water or gas injection to the reservoir core. We can monitor it also?
Yes. Yes, and we have done something like that. Most of our work in that direction right now is directed towards detecting the de-sized missing as a result of water or gas injections or whatever. We have done some work on enhanced recovery, but most of our work has been crack monitoring and that's been driven by the market who is drinking from us pyrolytes, trying to fill up with the demand of crack monitor.
Thank you, Peter. Smadon, is there any more questions?
One more?
One more question.
Do you have time, Pak Itha?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the time. My name is Ruliken Masya. My question is for Pak Yusri.
Yusri?
Yusri. Thank you. Okay, my question is about...
Yes, clearly.
Okay, continue. Pak Yusri, my question is about the productions. It's about the reservoir productions. So, based on your presentations, the permittability is very low. Permittability is range that range about 0.1 to 1. And for the productions, you use that for fracturing. Is there any others effort to produce these wells with the low permittability? Maybe as this very, very high pressure, pressure, they can be... Isn't possible, it's be, can be natural flow or there is nano AOR or something can be other, other chance to do the productions? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I think Peter mentioned this one really in his presentation that without fracking, the unconventional placement in our work, because of the initial very, very low permittability within the system, it's very hard to move hydrocarbon out of that, very small permittability. And right now, the most economical way to do it is just by simply doing the fracking. The fracking would allow, you know, the...
Yes, connect again.
The answer is no.
Reconnect again.
Alright, can you hear me now?
Yes, reconnect again.
Yes, we connect again. Okay, yes. Okay. The answer to the question is, right now, the most economical way to extract hydrocarbon from the shale play is only by fracture. There is no, I have not seen any methodology that economic enough to extract oil from the very small permittability we described in the presentations. And pressure that comes to play, the high pressure zone, the high pressure area not only can have high risk because first of all, it push, helping to push hydrocarbon out of the coal zone, the fracture zone and into the well floor. You can see actually very dramatically the impact of a high pressure zone compared to the original area. It makes significant production difference between the two. But any other methodology, you know, the without fracking, so far, it's probably not economy right now. Fracking is the most economic way to do it.
Regardless the... Regardless the economical, there is any puzzle in the issue that we apply some nano AOR to, to produce these fields, unconventional field?
Yeah, the...
Have you applied the nano AOR? Have you applied the nano AOR?
Yes, I haven't seen any. What I've seen so far is we fracking. Everything that we do is so far is we putting the bloodline. Next, I'll be hydrocarbon out.
I don't know, Peter, have you seen any nano E?
Yeah.
Uh, EUR, sorry.
Yeah, so, there are, I am aware in the Eagle Ford play, in the condensate zone, there are two operators that I know of who are actually trying huff and puff. They fract the reservoir and then pumping gas into the reservoir and then extracting it back and using the gas to harvest.
So, fracking still involved?
Oh, yes, they create the reservoir and the pathways and the plumbing. But they are doing, they are injecting gas into the reservoir and sort of huff and puff, inject and then play back and harvest on the condensate. That way you get a bigger return. I know that these two players try that right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Peter. Yeah, Peter mentioned that we haven't seen any technology without involving fracture, a fracture, a frank, fracking right now. If you do any U or any enhanced recovery. Any other question?
Uh, I think it's enough, Pak Yusri and Pak Itha. And from my side, this is very interesting presentation and very good sharing knowledge. And as you know from Pak Yusri, it's very interesting on the delivery presentation from the corporation of the company. Until the commercial, I think it's very good experience for us. And also from the Peter, which is bring the micro seismic, which is source from the fracture. This is a new technology that we want to learn. We don't have experience like a Peter presentation. And I think this is the milestone collaboration between Hagi CF and also the Hagi Chapter US. Regardless, we have a lack of the internet speed, but obviously, this is a great event that we can conduct together on the near future. And Ibu President, Ibu Rusalida, that you have any one notes from this event, please?
Yeah.
Hi, Itha, can you hear me? Itha?
Hello, Ida.
Hi, Itha. Hi, Itha. Can you hear me, Itha? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Ida?
Hi, yeah, okay. I would like to address my gratitude for Hagi Chapter US, CF and Congen RE, for Ibu Nana, for Itha and for Mr. Duri Rendisara, and also for honorable speakers. I think it's very interesting discussion and sharing knowledge for today. This is very useful discussion and very fruitful discussion for us about the unconventional and conventional hydrocarbon. And we hope that in the future, we will have another topics that you can share with us between Hagi Chapter US and Hagi in Jakarta. And also for your information, I would like to... Also, I would like to inform you that for the next two years, we will have a new president, Hagi President, Mr. Andri, Dr. Andri Dianugraha. He will be Hagi and replacing me. So, hopefully in the future, we will have more discussion and more collaboration between Hagi and also Hagi Indonesia. That's all and thank you very much and good luck for everybody. Thank you.
On behalf of the Hagi US Chapter, I would like to explain a relationship to Hagi technology in Indonesia to allow us to share this sort of new breakthrough. So, hopefully this going to be, you know, viable to what we are doing basically right now. Okay, the last thing I would like to do is we would like to present a moment as our thanks to the speakers. And I'd like to, Dr. Nana Yudan, come here to give the moment of course to Pak Yusri. Okay. Um, I'll give, uh, that what we want to do is I notice we would like to have everyone's to, and everyone's for the... Yeah. Ida, very quick, I hope you're going to remember these two students here. Can you see? Ida?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Can you see these two?
Yes, Itha.
Okay, can you guess right there? Ida? Can you see on the, on your screen?
Okay.
These two?
I'm here.
Go ahead, some back you. Can you see them?
Not yet, not yet.
Those are your colleagues in Kalsa.
Hi. Bye.
Yeah.
Hi, Richard. Hi, Richard, hi, Gokai, how are you? I'm very happy to see you there. Andrew is here. Your partner in crime, here.
Sini, Bu. Hey, Richard and Gokai.
Hi, how are you doing?
Fine, how about you? Gokai, how about our, our present company?
Hi, Gokai. Gokai, Richard? Hi, Itha.
It's calling you?
Hello, Ida.
Yeah. Itha, don't forget to take picture.
Hello, Itha. Congratulations, Itha, Pak Yusri and them. This is Tiki, man. From Jakarta. Hello.
Pak Andre?
This is Tiki speaking.
This is Tiki speaking.
Hello, my Tiki.
Yeah, it's very... Good, how are you? It's very proud that as I remember that two years ago maybe we met with Paiti, Ida to talk this and share idea for make the Chapter US Hagi happen. And right now I'm standing here that we can make the collaboration about Chapter US and then Hagi. It's very proud of me and this is as Pak Andre say for Hagi. And I hope that in every event of the annual Hagi event, the US Chapter can be shared and doing the same like this with more presenter and more topic that will be interesting for us. Thank you for handling this event with Ida and Paiti. It's very good, very proud of me.
Okay, Paiti, thank you for the time for having me. Also, we have continued with the honor to the annual session. And hopefully, Hagi US Chapter can continue to contribute to Indonesia. And especially our mission here is to have what is the channels in Indonesia right now that to find a way to improve our investment strategies. So again, thank you for the support from Hagi in Jakarta. We definitely want to...
Ida? Okay, Ida? Ida, mati ngasih. Oh, Ida, jangan pernah. Terima kasih.
I just think... Well, thank you. Again, one, two, three, two. Alright, well, thank you for the invitation, I really enjoyed doing.
Thank you.